It stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, first order, this business is being held virtually and will be recorded at its conclusion. Mr. Lippincott will post the meeting on the township's YouTube channel. A link to the meeting can be found on the township's website, Public comments, are there any public comments on agenda items? If so, please state your name and address.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Cliff Cole of Shucraft Road. I have a comment on the agenda.
All right.
Would it be possible during the manager's report to give the public an update on construction activity at the Eldelphia compressor site?
It will be possible only to the extent of whatever information that we have that we can divulge publicly.
Sure, I don't see why just reporting on construction activity would violate any lawsuits, but okay, thank you.
I don't know how complete that information will be because the manager really hasn't had an opportunity to, for that question.
Okay, but I know that he is aware of construction activity, but okay.
Any other comments on the agenda?
Yes, David, this is John Swerdruck.
Yes, sir.
My question is, will there be opportunity for public question prior to the board approving the Perkacy Regional Authority's sewer plan for Ridge Road?
All right, first, John, can you give your address, please?
Sorry, 715 Ridge Valley Road.
715 Ridge Valley, yes. Okay, we will get to the solicitor's report at which time we will talk about the sewer service agreement. And if and when there we get to that point, we'll make time for questions. I think that's important.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other questions or on the agenda, public comments? Okay, fine. I have one announcement. An executive session will be held following tonight's meeting to discuss legal and real estate matters. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes the December 16, 2020 meeting minutes, the January 4, 2021 reorganization meeting minutes, the wind plan review status, the emergency services report, building zoning and building permit report, public works report, conservation committee report, authorization to advertise for the UCC vacancy, the treasury's report, payment of bills. Mr. Lippincott, would you please read the treasurer's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the West Rock Hill Treasurer's Report, December 31, 2020. General Fund, $425,523.65, the open space, $1,027,768.44, the park fund, $30,334.60, the equipment fund, $203.92, highway capital, $129.45, street light, $34,221.18, the reserve funds, the general fund reserve, $389,869.61, open space, Manderfield, $11,178.4, the sewage maintenance fund, $180,752.65, the stormwater fund, $6,560.74, and the escrow funds, $506,467.19.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Chair, okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question if I could.
Yeah, I was gonna ask a question soon as, but go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Pfizer.
Okay, I'd like to ask the manager if we have all of the dead trees taken care of over in the park. And that would be questioned towards underneath the public works.
All the dead trees around the walking trail are taken care of.
Okay.
The trees go way back into the woods. I'm, you know, not sure about every single tree, but all the ones around the walking trail.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I would second Mr. Miller's motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, we'll vote confirmed appointments. We have a confirmed appointment with North Penn Water, Mr. Dan Preston. Mr. Preston, you have five minutes.
Yes, sir. There's a presentation that I guess needs to be loaded up. Could you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, you can just hit the start presenting. There's a presenting button on the right hand side.
Okay.
So you can present.
Right hand, upper right hand corner?
Right hand, pull your to the bottom right hand side.
Bottom right hand side. I'm sorry, I can't find the button you're referring to.
Is it possible the chair has to stop presenting before that button pops up, Greg?
Possibly, but.
There you go, it's up now.
What's up?
Present now in the bottom right hand corner.
Oh, there it is. Thank you, sir. Now I see it. So I can use my own screen to do that?
Correct.
Okay. All right, can everybody see this screen?
No, you have to click the press now, the present now button, then click your, what you want to present on your screen.
I did that, hold on.
And then you pick which screen, which tab you want to show.
Okay. That's interesting. Should have tried this out first, I guess, huh? Can you?
There we go.
And now it says you're presenting, so.
Can you see now?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll get started now. Hopefully my five minutes starts now because I have good time left.
Absolutely. I will start you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, our agenda today is the first one is the syndicate reiterate why we are here and what got us on the agenda tonight. The scope of the project that we're referring to and the benefits to West Rock Hill Township. So why are we here? The question we posed to the township is the township willing to work with MPWA and sign a contingency agreement to provide land to construct the water storage tank on township property, provided all local, state and federal permits are approved. So that's our question before the board. We're not expecting obviously a yes or no question, answer to that question at this point, but it's what we desire to pursue. The project scope is we want to like to construct a 500,000, up to a 500,000 gallon elevated water storage tank on township property. In order to connect that to the North Penn Water system, we need to construct approximately two and three quarter miles of 12 inch water main that would run from Tyler's Port to the Grandview Hospital area. And also make other modifications to existing booster stations. So here's the general scope of the project. Here's the tie in. Well, if you follow my cursor and Tyler's Port run down, running down Ridge Road, past the municipal complex where the tank would be located, boring under 309 and then tying in in the southern portion there of our West Rock Hill where the Grandview Hospital is. The benefits to West Rock Hill are it would greatly improve fire protection and doing so, public safety to West Rock Hill Township with addition of hydrants, fire reserve storage in the tank itself. Also with the addition of hydrants, it would improve the ISO classification of the township, which may also provide some benefit and relief in fire insurance premiums. Also, there's a potential relief to property owners with failure or compromised wells along the transmission main route. With township approval, of course, they would be able to tie into that main just to to get relief from that situation. And also it enhances domestic water quality and fire service to Grandview Hospital and the other institutional customers in that area such as the West Rocket Elementary School and and the Hidden Meadows on the Ridge and some other institutions out there. Tank location we're looking at is between the maintenance building and and the township building, as you can see there. To the north, we've got some power lines. We have a cell tower to the south and then of course the two the two buildings. So we're looking to to put that tank in that location. The tank design is a Spheroide with a made of steel. We're looking at 300 to 500,000 gallon capacity and the diameter of that bowl of 46 feet to 55 feet in diameter and a height of approximately 144 feet. We've done lots of preliminary analysis. We wanted to make sure if we step before the board that we've done some analysis to make sure that we could construct the tank at that location. So we've determined there's no facilities in the area. We talked to tank manufacturers about building close to the buildings. We've conducted a shadow analysis. We've also contacted the cell tower owner who is thinking that it's not going to be an issue at this point. This is just showing the shadow analysis that was done that would not affect if there were solar panels constructed to the south, that it's not going to be an issue for this tank. So what will it look like? Well, we looked, did a Photoshop from three vantage points from the township park looking to the north, from the south, and then also from Augustine Road. This is at the township park location. This is what this tank would look like. It's actually not as high as the cell tower. The cell tower is 180 feet high. Here is looking south due north from the from the southern vantage point. And you can see the cell tower in the foreground there. This is looking from Augustine Road and this is what the tank would look like from that location. We've just recently completed a similar tank in Lansdale and placed in operation in November of 2020. We work with municipalities to create a tank that provides some civic pride. So in this case, we had the Lansdale logo L on this, on the side of the Spheroide. So and and we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the community on this tank. And this is from another location. It is in a residential neighborhood and it's very close to buildings. As you can see in this picture here, the there's residents directly adjacent to the property. So we built very close to these tanks and was done safely and with no issues at all. So in summary, the real benefits of the community at large, there is a real benefit to the community at large with the significant improvements in fire protection and public safety. That that is a given because we'll have a tank right there. It will greatly enhance the fire protection in the institutional area where it's where it's definitely needed. And all of our West Rock Hill Township customers will see improved water quality, which is, which is nice as well. And we've shown, we were presenting our desire to be flexible and work within municipal requirements in order to utilize the site. So that concludes my five minutes. So thank you for your time and if I'll take any questions, if someone has has a question, I will be glad to answer that.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
I'll keep the sharing on if somebody wants to go, wants me to go back to a slide. If not, I'll just stop sharing at this point.
Fellow supervisors, anyone have any comments or and or questions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You may.
Okay, Mr. Preston, this is Jay Kaiser, one of the supervisors. I would like to ask just a clarification on the height of this tower again and what the the distance measurements are proposed from the township building as well as the public works building.
The exact measurements I do not have. I could, I could certainly provide that information at a later date. I did talk to three tank manufacturers. There's actually four in the country that can build this particular type of tank. I've talked to three out of the four and they all said there would be no issues with being able to construct that. Now, as far as during the construction, there'll need to be some lay down area and some temporary construction easements in order to do that. The only time where it might affect occupancy in the building is if they're actually raising the bowl up. And what we would do is try to, what we do is have that done on a Saturday so that it does not affect municipal operations.
I think Mr. Kaiser is more asking, is it, could we blow it over onto the township building? Like, is it, is it further away from the township building than it is high? You said it was 140 feet high. Is it more than 140 feet from the township building?
I believe so. Let me go back here and so we can look at the quick site plan. I know I flew through these slides.
The reason I ask that, Mr. Preston, is, is I recall the township, we've had a lot of conversations over these tanks over the years and as well as towers. And I think, Mary, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the township has some wording in our zoning that it has to be able to be one and a half times the distance from the, from the closest building so that it wouldn't, if it were to ever fall over, I know that it probably won't. But if it were to ever fall over, that it wouldn't hit one of the buildings. That's my concern of where you have this located.
I think what our ordinance says is it's got to be one and a half times, the setback has to be one and a half times the height, but that's a setback from the property line. I will double check that during the meeting, but I thought it was a setback from the property line, not necessarily a setback from the occupy, from, from a building.
Mary, I did review that and it does meet that setback requirement based on one and a half times the height.
Oh yeah, but you mean from the property lines, he's specifically.
From the property line, I mean.
He's specifically asking about the, the distance.
It is, the buildings are certainly closer to that. As I just indicated, we, we did construct a similar tank in a residential neighborhood next to homes. We have a lot of our tanks are constructed next to homes. These, these tanks are designed to survive a hurricane or an earthquake, really. So I'm confident that it would not be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Miller, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, the only thing I would say is, Mr. Preston, is that now that this is out in the public to move it forward, you should just work with Mr. Lippincott's office and apply for a land development development plan. And I think a lot of these issues will be discussed in, at the planning commission.
Whatever the board deems appropriate path to, for public and township review, we will certainly follow that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So I'll stop sharing?
You may.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, committee reports. The first committee report will be the planning commission. Mr. Durstein is not here this evening. I believe the, Mr. Almers is going to give that report, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. You may proceed.
This is actually, last week was our first planning commission meeting for the year. So the first thing we did was our reorganization. Nothing's going to change with regard to that. Chris will remain president. I will be vice president or chair, I'll be vice chair. And Andrew Yesko will remain the secretary. We had no formal plans, but we did have two sketch plans presented. The first was lot seven Butter Creek Builders. They currently have an approved subdivision plan using a large P loop road. They've been looking to redesign that site so that the P loop could be reduced because right now it runs through a lot of environmentally sensitive areas, including a lot of old grow or mature trees. The latest plan they've had, and they've presented several to us, is a P loop road with a less than 800 foot cul-de-sac coming off the P loop. Most of the planning commission had concerns that the there's still only one ingress, ingress, egress to the site. And they were looking for a second emergency access for that site. The plans as presented did show a driveway coming down to one of the back lots. And I discussed with Steve earlier today, the possibility of actually putting a road up through there and maybe extending the whole thing. The way it was left with the planning commission was it was up to Mr. Snyder to figure out, you know, how he wanted to proceed and present a formal plan to us. But we're just wondering if the, if the supervisors had any thoughts on that. I know a couple of you were there at the meeting.
Yeah, I, I think we still have some issues there, Alex. I didn't come out of there with a warm and fuzzy feeling that, that the plan that was being presented was in the best interest of everyone. I still feel like we have an issue with the the single driveway going in and how are people going to get out of there? So that's, that's, that's my main concern. And I also wanted to talk about at some point, I think we need to discuss the issue of a HOA versus a, a public road where we take the ownership and who's responsible for the various parts of that, like the sidewalks, the, the plowing, maintenance of mowing, the center areas. I just think that's something we need to bring out and figure out and have a very definite answer on how we're going to do that every time these come up.
I appreciate that.
Alec, David Collingwood, I would echo Mr. Miller's comments on both, both issues that he brought up. I was present at the meeting.
Okay, the.
This is Jack, yeah. I just want to, I just want to comment on, I do have concerns with the length of that. And I, I'm not pleased or not, I'm not open to the, to the concept of the township taking dedication and responsibility of maintaining that road. That's my position.
Yeah, I think what you're hearing is we're all in agreement with that, Alex.
All righty, good enough. Good enough. The second project that was presented to us was another sketch plan. This is for Mountain Energy Glide Path. It's a battery energy storage system. So basically it's going to be a site where they're going to bleed energy off of a substate, a PPNL substation and store it in, I don't know, something like 150 or 180 trailers, kind of like shipping containers that have lithium ion batteries in them. And they're going to store 200 megawatt, megawatts that they could have a, the batteries have a four hour lifespan on them. So they could actually discharge something like 800 megawatts over time. And they would use this energy to help balance the electric grid in the area. There was a lot of public comment, a lot of concern about the potential for fires related to this. And they basically were just giving us our first, first look at it. They'll need to come back in with a, an actual plan for that, but there was considerable public comment regarding that.
Okay, are we allowed to?
Thank you, Mr. Almer. Fellow supervisors, have any comments and or questions on?
Yeah, I have comments on this one too. My, my concerns when I walked away from that was leakage. I'm really, I didn't get a warm and fuzzy feeling coming out of that meeting about battery leakage and, and maybe it was just me, but that's how I felt about it. The second thing was the noise. They said it would have the hum of a, about like an outside air conditioner, but when you're going to have, I don't know how many hundred of these in there. That could be a lot of air conditioners. So I'd like, I'd like to know more about that before we really move forward.
David Collingwood here. I've seen the photographs. I think you were being kind when you said they were, they looked like storage containers. They look more like tractor trailer trucks. And they have these huge compressors for each, every one of them. And I think you take that 80, that's not going to be a healthy environment down there to be around. Pfizer?
Yeah. I, I share the same kind of concerns over that. I'd have to see more information regarding that.
Thank you for your input.
Okay, with that said, may I have a motion to approve the planning commission report?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. May I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Mr. Lippincott, do we have anything, any comments or any questions, emails from anyone? You're shaking your head now, okay.
No, no, we do not.
All right, so all those in favor of approving the planning commission report, do so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Reports approved. Next, we have the Park and Recreation Report, Mr. David Reese.
All right, we'll come off mute first. All right, last week we had our first Park and Rec meeting for the year. We did have our reorg meeting. I will remain the chairman. Suzanne Clark's going to be the vice chair and Robbie Fisher is going to be the secretary moving forward. So we had a little shuffle there, but nothing major. So you'll see my smiling face every month, so just a heads up. We welcomed Jay Kaiser back to the team. He came back to us, so he's the Board Supervisors Liaison with the Park and Rec. We have a couple of events that we're talking about this year. We're going to start with the fishing derby. We have a tentative date. This is all barring COVID restrictions and all those details are, you know, available for us to have our events. Fishing Derby would be tentatively April 24th. Same time, same place as normal, usually like a nine to 12. Similar kind of a day and events, maybe a little less or restricted numbers dependent on all the numbers and COVID related issues. Moving to Park, we're looking still for August date. So it depends one of those weekends in August, whether it's the 7th, the 14th or the 21st, one of those Saturday evenings to have a movie in a park. Last year's movie in a park was quite successful. We had a beautiful evening. Had a decent amount, I think there's like 45 people there. So it was a good turnout. Everybody enjoyed it. And this year we're looking to return with September Fest, hopefully crossing our fingers, crossing our toes, eyes, ears, and everything that we can have September Fest, whether it be at a lower level or, you know, expanded, you know, extended version of September Fest, we can hopefully get back to some sense of normalcy in the park. We're looking to have those three events that are typical to our Park and Rec. We had a successful year last year, kind of pushed a couple of things off. We didn't have fishing derby last year because of COVID. But we're looking to continue and, you know, look for great 2021. We're looking to do a little bit of documentation, procedure documentation, electronic. So we have kind of like an event calendar. So we have a timeline, if you will, of events of how we categorize, how we come about events, kind of like a documentation of, you know, when we start looking for fish, you know, the fishing derby, when we start planning, what we're looking for, how, you know, just kind of documentation around it. So we have some good documentation of how we run our events. So we can look back over the events or after the events and see how we did and see what we can do better. See what we, you know, what we can learn from those. So that's one of our plans for looking better for 2021. And on a more sad note, we did in December lose Charlie Gens, who was a huge member of our Park and Rec committee for many years. We were talking about having some type of memorial dedication. And since he was instrumental in, you know, the fishing derby and its inception, we kind of like to have something in place, whether it's a tree, whether it's a plaque, something similar, maybe a dedication ceremony, possibly on the fishing derby day. So that's kind of what we were discussing, talking about. And kind of looked to something of that nature. We had some ideas and we're still tossing those ideas around to finalize some of those ideas, what we want to move forward with. And one other thing, we just, that I just jotted down. It was just a question that came up about the, the case, the cases in the Board of Supervisors Committee room as far as when we possibly could put some of our Park and Rec items that we have in those cases. And I think that's it.
Okay, I have one comment and then I'll ask for comments or questions. Okay, uh, I have one comment. Um, and then I'll ask for comments or questions from the other board members. Uh, we discussed the showcases in November and I think that collectively we all agree um, on the direction we'd like to go with that. Um, right now the meeting room has no visitors. We suggested in November that if a showcase was uh, needed, it might be better during the pandemic to be in the lobby. Uh, I reached out to the president of the Historical Society. They do have a plan in place um, to move into the house. They've got eight windows replaced. They have eight more to replace. And I, they need to install new furnace. And until the air over there in that building is either air conditioned or heat conditioned, the artifacts can't be moved into that building. But I think we all agree that uh, that's the direction we want to go. It just may not be as timely as we'd all like. That's my thought.
That's fine. I just, I just had to put it back on the agenda because it was a new year. Just wanted to make sure it was on there. Thank you. I appreciate the call.
Dave and Dave, Dave and David. Um, uh, I, I, I think we should start putting a timeline on this. Um, I'd like to see some dates from the Historical Society on, on when they think they can get the funding and, and get the, the heater in. Um, I know there's already a plan to get the windows in and I know you're, you're talking to folks about the heater. So it, to me, it sounds like it's going to be sometime over the summer, possibly, hopefully. Um, and, and like you said, nobody's going to be going into that room between now and then anyway. So um, it's just my point. I just, I just think we need to start putting some dates around this.
Okay, Mr. Kaiser, any, any comments or questions?
Uh, just, just, um, we've, we've hashed this out. We've talked about this in the past. Um, I, I think I even brought it up at one of the meetings. Um, I believe that the Historical Society is using one of our rooms in the basement. Uh, still, are they not?
There is, was a room in the basement that was constructed by the Historical Society for um, some of the artifacts that they have, yes. And that room, I believe, I, I haven't been able to get recently, but I believe that room is starting to overflow a little bit as well.
Okay. Well, anyway, um, I, I, I know that everybody's working on it and I just think that it should continue to be worked on. There should be some timelines. I agree with Mr. Miller. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. So um, may I have a motion to approve the parking rec report?
I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. One second.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Signify by aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes. They will uh, move to the commission reports now, the police report. Uh, I don't believe Chief Blake is here. I believe Mr. Lippincott, you are going to read those uh, report, that report this evening, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, following this for the month of December twenty twenty, uh, the Penridd Regional Police Department responded to four hundred and thirteen calls for service. Of those calls, a hundred and forty-eight were in East Rock Hill Township. Two hundred and sixty-five were in West Rock Hill Township. The department handled twenty-two traffic crashes, seven were in East Rock Hill, and fifteen were in West Rock Hill Township. Fifteen were reportable crashes and seven were non-reportable crashes. Uh, Penridd Regional Police Officers responded to um, one part one crimes and thirty part two crimes in December totaling thirty-one crimes. Part one crimes are also known as index crimes of violent crimes. These crimes include homicide, sexual assault, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, theft, auto theft and arson. The West Rock Hill crimes were sexual assault against a minor, assault, fraud, two cases, DUI, two cases, criminal mischief, possession of marijuana, two cases, disorderly conduct, harassment, trespass, abandoned vehicle, five cases. Charges for December twenty twenty um, were possession of marijuana, one, DUI, three, disorderly conduct, one. Other police activities, officers conducted two hundred and twenty-six traffic enforcement details, a hundred and fifteen details on Old Bethlehem Pike. Officers issued seven verbal traffic warnings, seven traffic citations and eleven written warnings. Officers also conducted four hundred eighty business checks.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lippincott. Uh, any comments or questions from the board?
I just wanted to comment that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jay.
Nope, I said, I was gonna say I had none. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I, I just want to make note that Detective Lewis retired in December. Um, and uh, we will miss him and uh, the chief, well, we're retiring soon. And we are, uh, we have advertised and uh, are, are going through the process of, of hiring, not, we are not hiring yet. We're still going through the process of picking uh, some candidates for a, a new chief.
Right. All right, with that said, may I have a motion to approve the police report?
I'll make a motion.
And I will second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Report is accepted. Uh, joint recreation authority report, Mr. Miller.
We had our first meeting for, for the year in January. Um, we have uh, openings at the pool for a manager and guards. We are moving forward and we, we are one hundred percent sure, one way or another, we're going to open this year. So um, we got a lot of work to do. We've got a lot of work to do, get the pool cleaned up. There's a lot of uh, weeds and stuff that came up because we were closed last year. So uh, like you said, right now we're just doing all of our planning. Probably by March, we're going to have to start draining the pool and, and getting it cleaned very well and, and get a, two coats of paint on there. So um, that's where we are right now. We've got to get the pool painted, like I said, and then we've got the new zip line we have to put up before we, before opening day. So we're planning all that right now. And uh, I'll give you some more information next month. That's all I have.
When is opening day, Mr. Miller?
It's Memorial Day weekend.
Assuming everything is kosher.
Yes. And we, and we are, we are also reviewing all the COVID requirements, which I think are actually changing a little bit this year from what they were last year, but we have sets from last year. We've talked to various pools in the area to find out how they handled social distancing and how they handle taking temperatures and, and all the other stuff they had to do. So we're getting all up to speed on that.
Uh, any other comments, uh, Mr. Kaiser?
Uh, I have none.
Okay, so uh, I'll look for a motion to approve the uh, joint recreation authority report.
I'd make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Report is accepted. Uh, tax collector's report, it's uh, Ms. Clark here?
Yes, I am here. Um, well, I have nothing to report for collective for the month of January of the new year because liens were filed from my office on January fifth with the Bucks County Tax Claim Bureau. So the liens went down there and I did lien a little bit more than I did last year. Um, but they're, they're down there. Um, if anyone has been leaned, they can pay down at Bucks County Tax Claim Bureau before the end of this month and not receive any further penalties. Um, if they can get it in there. And that's, that's about all I have.
Great. Thank you. Does the board have any comments or questions on the tax collector's report?
I do not.
Having
I have none.
Having none, uh, may I have a motion to approve the report?
I'll make a motion.
I will second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Report is accepted. Um, engineers report, Mr. Steven.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I, I see I have no specific items on the agenda. Um, so unless there's any other questions, I do not have anything else to report tonight.
Hey, questions or comments from the board?
I have none.
There's no report to uh, approve?
Yes. Nope, we're good.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move to the solicitors' report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. There's two items on the solicitors' report tonight. If it's all right with you, I'll take the second item first so that Mr. Horn can leave and go about the rest of his life. I, I sent you a memo. Um, I under, I have a co-permittee agreement that we put in your packet and gave to Grandview Hospital. The reason for a co-permittee agreement is that um, when applicants want to put stormwater management facilities in state highways, PennDOT for the last ten years has taken the position that we have to be a co-permitee or a co-applicant on their, on their stormwater management HOP. In order for us to do that, we asked the applicants to sign um, co-permittee agreements, which makes them perpetually responsible for the maintenance of those stormwater facilities and provides, in this case, the um, improvements weren't significant, so a modest um, fee for the admin, the perpetual administration of the agreement and making sure that they actually repair things when they're broken down. It's um, it's a pretty standard agreement. It's the PennDOT recommended co-permittee agreement with a few changes to make it more realistic for West Rock Hill Township. And I note that Mr. Horn from the hospital is present. I don't have a copy of the signed agreement back from the hospital. They have sent a letter indicating that they're willing to enter into a co-permittee agreement. But I wouldn't necessarily recommend that you sign the agreement until the hospital indicates that the language is, is um, satisfactory to them. So um, Mark?
Yeah, Mary, I was going to say we, I signed the documents yesterday and they were emailed um, last night or first thing this morning. I'm not sure if they were sent to Greg or to Steve, but uh, they have been signed by myself on behalf of Grandview.
Uh, your words good enough for us. Um, so it's either Steve or Greg. If um, Greg said he forwarded them to me, I didn't see them, Greg. Um, but um, that having been um, established, I would recommend the execution of the agreement if you so desire.
So what I, what I'm hearing is that we would be making a motion to adopt an ordinance to create us, um, to um, adopt a co-
It's a co-per, it would be a motion to adopt the co-permittee agreement between, between Grandview Hospital and West Rock Hill Township.
For a highway occupancy permit for enclosed surface storm water facilities, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, and that would be ordinance number twenty twenty-one.
Well, it's not an ordinance, that's just an agreement.
I'm sorry. Stand corrected. Okay, um, so we have someone that uh, could make that uh, that motion?
I'd make, I'd make that motion, Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. And we have a second?
I will second it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, then uh, it's good.
And I do stand corrected. Greg did forward those agreements at ten oh three this morning. Once again, he's right and I'm wrong, so that makes it tied.
All right. I just, on behalf, on behalf of Grandview, thank you for doing that for us. We appreciate it.
Um, Mary, this is Steve. Did, did that include all of the other agreements, the development?
No, 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 I haven't gotten comments back on those. This is just for the co-permittee agreement.
Thank you.
All right, the second item on the solicitors' report is a hangover from the last month's meeting. Um, it's the Percival Borough Authority request um, to adopt a mandatory connection ordinance for that um, section of Ridge Road where I guess it's nineteen houses where they are planning to extend the sewer line. Um, in terms of the content of the agreement, it is almost, at the last meeting, I asked you to withhold your consideration of the ordinance, um, because I had some concerns, a few concerns there, and we were meeting with them a few days after your meeting. We were meeting with PRA. We had our meeting with PRA. They um, they agreed to any comments that we made. There was only two or three. And then there's one item um, that I think requires a little bit of board attention, but mostly it is consistent with the service agreement that you signed with them in two thousand and eleven and almost identical to the mandatory connection ordinance um, that you signed for the, for the last sewer line extension. So I, except for this one issue, I don't have any comments on the agreement. And that issue is this. Um, people who have operating septic systems and their houses are already constructed, don't have to connect until they sell their house. Um, that's the language in your service area agreement and that's also the language in the last, eh, the last ordinance that you adopted. This ordinance also says that um, when the ownership changes, when any ownership changes, and I think that it would be appropriate to have an exception in there when the property is bequeathed to a relative. So if you're living with your mother and your mother dies, that doesn't necessarily trigger a sewer connection event. I don't know how the board feels about it, but I think it's something that you should at least consider.
I, I want to be clear about that, Mary. Um, so you're saying that if, if it's bequeathed to someone else in the family, it would not require a sewer connection until that eventually got sold out to someone not in the family?
Um, right. So there's two possible variations on that. There's one, if it gets bequeathed to somebody who is also living in the property and a member of the family. And then there's two, if it gets bequeathed to somebody who is not living in the property and is going to move in after the parents died. Um, I think both of those should probably be decided separately.
Hmm, okay.
I don't know if the manager has a recommendation.
He's on mute.
Yeah. No, I agree with Mary that it, it should keep people who are living in the same household not mandatory connect until it's sold to another party.
So we're agreeing with the solicitor with the exception that she is suggesting.
Well, I there, as I said, the, I, I think what Greg did was address the situation where somebody's living with an elderly parent and then continues to live in the house.
Correct.
That's probably the, the easier or clearer situation. What happens when the house is bequeathed to a child who then moves in but is not um, living with you before he moves in, or she? Um, do you feel the same way about that situation?
I do.
Yeah, I think, I think I agree with Jay. Um, it, it's still a family member. Um,
Right.
So no connection if bequeathed to a member of the immediate family, is that? Or any family member who was living in it. So could, if you had your nephew or grandchild living with you, okay?
Any family member.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with that. Um,
Okay, you're right. Because you're not going to, you're not going to bequeath your house to somebody that you don't have a close personal relationship with.
Exactly.
Right.
So I think we're all in agreement there.
All right. Um, that, that was the only thing that I thought required attention, but I don't know how you feel about the mandatory connection ordinance in general.
I have a, I have a question if I may, Mr. Chairman.
You may.
Okay, um, so a few years ago, we did a survey, uh, and it was pretty close. I, I think it was maybe forty-nine, fifty or something like that percent on people that wanted to connect and, and those who didn't want to. Has anything changed regarding that, do we know? And that would probably be for Greg to answer.
Well, actually, if, I'm sorry, Greg, I don't mean to jump in, but um,
It's okay.
This is a little bit different of a project. So there aren't fifty houses. There's, there's nineteen. And in nineteen, I see one, two, three, four, five noes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven yeses and one, two, three, four. I believe four, um, four no answers.
Yeah.
So maybe it's five, maybe that's six noes. Let me just count that in. One, two, three, four. And that's five noes. Um, there's yes, there's more yeses than anything else. Um, there's five noes and then there's a handful of people who did not send back any response. Nearly everyone that said they wanted, said yes, um, also indicated that they would benefit from a payment plan. I don't think that.
I think, I think also, um, giving them the option to not, to, to keep it in the family or not sell it.
I think, I think also, giving them the option to not, to keep it in the family or not sell it, or not, not tie in until they sell it, I think that gives them a little leeway also. But I think, I think they lose a lot of the benefits if they wait, don't they? Because right now, they can get a pretty good plan at a fairly reasonable price. Do they not lose this, lose that, do they not have a worse cost if they do it later?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I know that this project, yeah, they almost certainly would, because I think, right, Steve?
Yeah, I thought that there was some incentives to do it now because there was some funding that was going to come in to help defray the costs from the actual homeowners.
Yeah.
They got a grant. I don't know if that's gonna sit in their coffers forever.
Exactly.
Um, no, it's, I mean, they're gonna use the, they're gonna use the money at hand. It's whether, I guess, whether they extend that reduced EDU price past the project. Obviously, the, the funding options are another thing that might change over time. The extended funding option. That would be a PRA authority issue. Well, I feel like we're, we're giving them, we're giving them some options here, and if they want to do it now, they can do it now. But if they want to wait, it may cost them more, but that would be their decision. But we're not forcing them to do it. I think, I think I like it the way it is.
Yeah, the one thing I, okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was gonna, I was just gonna add there, Mr. Chairman, the one, that's pretty close. Like, you're like two, two more in favor than not. And I know that this was a really heated issue when we discussed it last time. I'm thinking about the pockets in this time where, where everybody's struggling and some people have lost their jobs. I'm thinking about that. And I'm also thinking that the reason that this sewer line wants to be extended there is, is for that village. And I'm, and I, and I mentioned before, I don't know why we are not forcing the developer, whoever's gonna develop that village, to pay for this project. So we're mandatory putting a sewer connection out there and forcing these homeowners in this residential, which I know most of the systems are failing. However, that sewer line is gonna benefit somebody further on down the line as well, and we all know that. So I want, I want, I want the fellow board members to think about that.
Yeah, that's a good point, Jay. If we knew when that was gonna happen, I mean, like you said, we have failing sewer systems there, and that's, that's what I see, the urgency. But I, I understand what you're saying, and I agree that the builder should be looking at that as, as at least subsidizing quite a bit of it. We just don't have a timeline. It's-
Yeah. Okay, well, I just said my piece, so thank you for the time.
Yeah.
Um, maybe this isn't the time that we should be making a decision on this. I do know that we have some questions from the public, so perhaps, Mr. Lippincott? Is there questions from the public we would like to?
I just know John Sweraduck said he had questions.
Is he available to speak?
Yes, David, thank you.
You may.
Thank you. This is John Sweraduck, 715 Ridge Valley Road. I have a couple of questions about the plan itself. The plan, as I understand it, extends the sewer line up to Mountain View Road. My first question is, is there a plan for the residents who live past Mountain View Road? There's six additional homes between Mountain View Road and Washington Avenue. Is there a plan for those folks?
This is, this is Steve Bow. To my knowledge, there's no additional plan right now. I, I don't know what may or may not be in the planning, future planning for PRA, though.
Okay. My, my second question is, would it be better to extend the sewer another 900 feet to cover those six additional residences along Ridge Road so that they would also be able to take advantage of the grant money? If there's gonna be a discount offered to folks who live between Mountain View Road and Bethlehem Pike, if they're able to get a, a cost break because of the grant money, and then the other six homes would have to be full price because they're not able to take advantage of the grant money? You're kind of creating a, an artificial situation between the haves and the have-nots, where one group can take advantage of the money, the other group can't, versus a plan that would be potentially fair to everybody?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just so you understand. Yeah, this is PRA's proposal. It's not the Board of Supervisors' proposal. So you ask good questions, but only PRA can answer those questions, whether or not they have any interest in extending it, you know, six houses further. And I don't know that the people six houses further have, have been polled to see if they have any interest in doing that, or the amount that it would increase. And, but PRA would know the answers to those questions, and, and we don't necessarily.
This is Steve again. Just to add to that, my understanding is the grant itself has limitations of how large the project can be. And what they've designed is within the scope of what the grant will permit. So I'm not sure that, under this grant, it could be extended further to get those nine homes. But again, as Mary indicated, I have to confirm that.
So the township itself doesn't have any approval over the plan that was developed?
Well, the township has, no, I think simply put, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And Steve, Greg, did you have thoughts on that?
I agree. We don't, we don't really have control over the, the plan is just the planning area that they are serving.
And the mandatory connection ordinance.
Right, but we do have a 2011 agreement, which obligates us to adopt a mandatory connection ordinance when they're doing a sewer extension.
So is there a timeline on when that ordinance has to be approved, based on what you just said, Mary?
Um, no, there isn't.
Does that decision have to be made this evening?
No, it does not.
There is a timeline, though, on their grant application. I do not know what the timeline is, but I know there's a timeline on the grant.
Um, we're not, this is in, this ordinance isn't advertised. It's, you're not having a public hearing on the ordinance tonight. You're just talking about whether or not you want to advertise the ordinance, or whether you want to send it to the planning commissions for their review, advertise it for a hearing. Those options are available to you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
You may.
Okay, would it be appropriate to ask the manager to go back to, you know, Percival Regional Authority and ask the questions that Mr. Sweraduck asked? Because they seem to be legitimate questions. And I kind of, I'm kind of wondering myself why they didn't include, because originally, that line was gonna go all the way to the bypass before the other avenue was, was sought out. So it might be wise to discuss the, the other houses, the other six houses, or six properties that are up that way.
Uh, David Collingwood here. I, I agree with Mr. Kaiser. I, I don't know that we should be rushing to judgment here this evening. I think if there's a chance that we have, we can go back to these people and have further discussions, I think that's the prudent thing to do, in my opinion.
And I would agree with both of you.
Right, so the direction from the board is, you have questions, especially Mr. Sweraduck's questions, that you'd like to answer, and we'll put this back on the agenda for next month?
Agree.
That would be mine, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you. I don't have any other matters under the solicitor's report unless you have questions for me.
Any questions from the board?
No.
No.
But that said, may I have a motion to approve the solicitor's report?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make. Okay, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Thank you, Mr. Miller. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the report is accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lippincott, township manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items. The first item is the sale of the 2007 GMC truck. The bidding ended today. A high bid was from a Dave Okerlund for $15,600 for the GMC truck.
Wow, great. Mr. Lippincott, how does that compare with the, the original bids that we put out in December?
17, 8 was the original bid.
All right, so we're 15, 6.
You're at 15, 6.
And the bidding period has, has closed, or is it-
Has closed, and it closed at 1:15 this afternoon.
Okay. So we're gonna handle the sale of the blower separately from the truck? Or do you want to have them just discuss at the same time?
I would, I would like to handle them separately because once to one person and-
Okay.
To a different person.
Okay, then I will make a motion to accept the, the bid for the GMC truck.
I will second that motion. All those in favor, or say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're okay with the sale of the truck, Mr. Lippincott? So, or debris blower?
The debris blower. That ended today, too. I bid was township. And the high bid was $1,800.
And that also ended today, correct?
Correct. That ended today at noon.
Well, I would make a motion to accept that bid for the debris blower. If there's no other discussion from the board?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's great. Seventeen, $17,400 into the coffers.
And that's all I have.
Any comments from the board? Questions?
No comments.
Okay, we'll look for a motion to approve the township manager's report.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, Jay made it. I'll second.
Thank you both very much. All those-
So you guys are totally just ignoring the-
Sorry, question?
For a, a, engineer, the township manager to talk about the Adelphia construction?
I stand corrected.
I'm sorry, why wouldn't that be under old business?
Yeah, and why is he, Mr. Chairman, why is he interrupting the meeting?
We can do that under old business. He had a question at the very beginning on the agenda items.
I, I understand that, but to, but to break in while we're conducting a, a vote is not appropriate from a citizen. Is that, am I correct in stating that?
You, you are, you are. We were, we were going through a, a motion to accept the manager's report. I think we should leave that, and then I think we should move on to old business, and we can certainly address Mr. Cole's questions.
That would be the time, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the manager's report. We have a motion, we have a second. Did we, did we finish? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The manager's report is therefore accepted. We'll move on to old business. Anyone having any old business?
I have none.
I'd just like Greg to give us an update on the compressor station.
Thank you.
Um, from what I know is going out there, I know they've put the power back to the electric lines, back to the compressor station. I know that they have started doing earthwork and site work and stabilization. I know that they put down geotextile for the parking lots and the staging areas. And I know they're getting ready to start.
Okay. Fine, thank you, Mr. Lippincott. Any other old business?
Yeah, I just, I just have a question with that. Had they, had they talked at all about, and, and maybe I just heard this somewhere else, about changing this to a, a different type of power, electric rather than whatever they were gonna use? For the compressors?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other old business, Mr. Kaiser, Mr. Miller?
No.
No.
Move on to new business? Any new business?
I have none.
The board wishes to discuss. All right, thank you. We'll go to public comment. I'll start with Mr. Lippincott.
There are no emails for public comment.
Thank you. That said-
Can I make a suggestion for a public comment?
State your name and address.
Suzanne Clark.
All right.
Lonely Road. The tax collector salary is up for the next four years. It has to be set by February the 15th. I know I've sent letters to the supervisors in regards to this. Are you just going to ignore it for the next four-year term, or what are your thoughts?
Since you brought it up, Wes, for discussion or comments. Mr. Kaiser, do you have any comments or discussion on that?
Well, my comments would be, I, I respect and understand Suzanne Clark's request. However, from my perspective, I think with the upgrades that were given and the, and the office, the bigger office out front there, I am not prepared to, to change the, the fees guys with this time.
Mr. Miller, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, first of all, let me state that this is about the taxpayer position in, in general, because this, this goes on for, for however long. Uh, like Mr. Kaiser said, we, we did give an upgrade to the room. We provide electric, we provide internet service, we provide heating, cooling, and there's no cost at all. In my mind, if, you know, this is not the way most townships do it. And that's, that's a service that we're providing. If we were going to give an additional salary, then I think we should charge rent for the room. So I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with Mr. Kaiser. I think, I think we're giving a lot of benefits and, and township money right now to, to help out the tax collector. And I, I just don't want to add additional cost to that. It's my opinion.
I would echo those opinions. I think all three of us are in, in agreement. There's a, there's a lot being given in return, that, a lot of upgrades since the office was moved to help the handicapped and just, I think it's the right thing to do is to stand, stand where we are. Any other public comments?
Mr. Chairman, Tony Bogner, if I could make a comment?
You may. Address?
2920 Climber Avenue.
All right.
I have two, two comments. The North Penn Water Authority with the tower. Are they, I mean, I know it's a comment, but it is a question, but are they leasing the property from the township? Or what is the financial interaction between North Penn Water and West Rock Hill Township? That's my one question. And the other question, again, it's a public comment, but where are they pumping from to fill that tower? And I couldn't get those questions in. I know John made a comment that he wanted to ask Mr. Preston a few questions, and it didn't happen. But I would have liked to ask that, but I'll ask that at a later date. But they were my two comments. If you want to rebuttal, that's fine. If not, that's fine, too.
I, I can answer his first question, if the board doesn't mind. The first question is, I think Steph is kind of presenting this to the board as, first of all, would you be willing to consider a tank on the property? And then we would work out the, the financial arrangements, and whether it's a lease or an easement or whatever, the, the legal situation that would allow them to be there. None of that's been decided yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is Cliff Cole, Shu Cropp Road. I do have a comment. I just sent an email to Mr. Lippincott.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think we finished Tony's second question. Does anybody know where the water's being pumped from? Does anybody know where the water is being pumped from?
Uh, Mr. Miller, I, I heard publicly, or from Mr. Preston, if you go back and look, there, that he said it was being pumped from Tylerport.
Yeah, that's what he, what he said, yeah, and right down Ridge Road. So does that answer your question, Tony?
Yeah, I just was curious where the pump station was, if Jay knew where that was at.
I'm assuming it's Tyler, Tylerport. There's a, there's a, there was one put out there for the, for that development that's out there. I think that's what they're tying into.
Okay, that would be like Allentown Road. Okay.
Road, right.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Jay.
All right, now move to the next question or comment.
Uh, Mr. Cole, me, I'm allowed to talk?
Yep.
Okay. I very much apologize for interjecting in there. I had, when, at the beginning of the meeting, I had asked for it to, the agenda to be during the manager's report. And so that was what I was expecting. I would like to make a request that we, for now, until the Adelphia compressor is gone, or built, or whatever, for the manager to please give a detailed report about what the construction activity out is at the site. I think the public has a right to know that. Another comment I'd like to make on this meeting, I suppose on a more positive note. I, I'm, in some, I'm very sad to hear that Chief Rodney is, uh, is retiring. I would just like to say that I believe that the township should do something for him. I personally know that I'm, don't, I'm not alone on this, but I believe that the Penbridge Police is a real jewel that the West Rock Hill Township is luckily, lucky to be a, a part of. I personally have been, you know, benefited by the police department many, a few years back. Some people might know that some, a couple of my guitars were stolen from me, custom guitars. And the, I think it was Karcher, who's retired also, was a detective, and they actually recovered my guitars. And I also admit that my, I am colored by the fact that I, I do count Rodney as a friend. But still, aside from that, I think that the township really should do something in honor of him when the time comes. I hope we can find a replacement as, as good as, as the chief. He'll be very hard to replace, I think.
Thank you. Any, uh, any more public comments? Mr. Lippincott, none? Okay, thank you.
No more.
So with that said, I will move for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. I will second it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, immediately adjourned. Thank you. Thank you very much.